Yeah, why don't you introduce yourself?
Yeah, of course. I just didn't know. Do we have anybody else in the waiting room? Are we jumping right in?
We have no one else yet, right?
All right, well, let's jump right in then. So, good evening, everyone. My name is Kathy Lewis. I am the current Chair of the Mashpee School Committee. I am in my second term on the committee. I have a freshman in high school at Mashpee Middle High School. I grew up in Mashpee, live, you know, came back and have my family here now and just really am enjoying the work on the school committee that I've been doing. And I'm also the recent elected Secretary for Division Seven with the Massachusetts Association of School Committees. So not only do I work here in Mashpee, but I also try to keep us connected to what's going on at the state level with school committees as well. So, uh, welcome to tonight, and we have with us, uh, Don, if you'd like to introduce yourself.
Sure, uh, Don Myers. Um, I've been on the school committee for a while, I think eleven years, maybe?
Okay.
And various roles. One of the things which we're gonna talk about tonight, um, I focus a lot on, um, just because I have a finance background is our finances. And, you know, neither we spend and allocate, well, allocate and spend, uh, educating our students, educating our teachers, administration, and supporting the needs of everyone. So we have a lot of stuff coming here in Mashpee.
And I am Superintendent Patty DeBoer. Welcome to this. This is the second of four planned sort of drop-in Zoom meetings where the school committee can help to inform our parents and guardians in Mashpee community what they do in their role as members of the school committee.
Great, thank you. Yeah, Ashley, do you want to introduce yourself really quick?
Hi, everyone. I'm Ashley Lopes. I'm the Director of Finance.
The one who prepares the original budget with input from everybody. She's the one who pays all the bills, um, for the district.
Yeah, she is our numbers guru.
So, without her, everything we're talking about is preaching home.
So true. So, um, as Superintendent DeBoer said, this is our second, uh, drop-in Zoom. Um, and tonight, we're going to be discussing the fiscal year 2025 budget as well as the 2024 Family Opinions Survey and Student Opinion Survey. And, um, we might touch on one other topic if we have time, but we're gonna see how long it takes us to get to those, through those two first. So with that being said, um, we're kind of in the middle of budget season. So for those of you who don't understand municipal budgeting, um, it's quite a process. Um, the fiscal year starts July 1st, ends June 30th, and because of that, we begin our process sometime in October, um, where Ashley will kind of start, she probably starts a little bit before then, I would say. Um, but October is kind of one of our first big deadlines where we have to enter the, um, the proposed budget into the town system, kind of to get the ball rolling. Um, sorry, we've got a couple introductory slides here.
Yeah.
Yeah, so currently, um, we serve about, we serve fourteen, 1,458 students. Um, we present this narrative, um, we call it the budget narrative, to the town manager and um, eventually goes before the select board for their approval, which then it comes for the town for approval um, at town meeting. So these are some of our highlights from the last year and some of our goals, um, actually from more than just the last year, um, but these are what we like to highlight our district is doing. Don, feel free to chime in at any point if you want to add anything here.
Well, so one of the things that I just wanted to point out here, this whole process really starts, um, a year in advance of when the budget gets submitted. So, um, in the spring, so this coming spring, um, the school starts really working to try to put together all the estimated expenses, and then that process continues forward, uh, to what Kathy was talking about in regard to, um, coming together as a district-wide, uh, budget, but it really comes from the very bottom up and gets, uh, raised and reviewed at multiple levels within the administration, um, so that now all of the needs of the students that we can anticipate are covered. But one of the, um, big problems is we're making a budget well in advance of when the actual expenditures are going to happen. So, um, there is some guesswork, uh, and estimation that has to take place in doing this, that, and, you know, I really commend uh, Ashley and the administration on their ability to be able to do that. I don't know as a parent, I could do that. Um, but they're able to consistently come up with a, um, pretty good budget that, um, supports the needs of the students.
So for I was just gonna say, so what Don was saying, in March and April of this year, so in '24, we start to accumulate from the ground up the early workings for the budget for FY26. So that's what kind of lead time we're talking about, um, when we're working towards planning the future years for Mashpee.
And I think the other important thing that Don and Superintendent DeBoer hit on is that a lot of it is estimates, and with, you know, municipal municipalities and towns, there's like, it's procurement is a very big thing. So we may have a project that we can estimate, but until it goes out to bid, until we get those quotes back, we don't necessarily always know the full scope of the cost. Um, and so sometimes we're estimating for things that we need to put in the budget, but we don't always have hard numbers until things come back to us through that procurement process for some of the bigger projects. Um, so just keeping that in mind too, that it's, it's more than just kind of looking at numbers. There are some estimations made, and then I think I'm gonna echo Don's point here that, you know, we have a great team that really is able to do a good job and, and keep a, a pretty good budget that is making sure the needs are met and the facilities are maintained and, and it's, it's working. So that being said.
I was gonna add, and then we can do it later on the slide, but about eighty-one percent of our budget is personnel. And in most cases, that, that we have a, I mean, we have a very good handle on each individual who's within that budget, where they are in terms of what their salary is supposed to be the following year. So we feel confident generally with that number, but then there are always variables with unexpected retirements or what someone comes in at. So um, while there's a lot of knowns, there are always those unknowns. So.
So what we're looking at now is in the budget overview, we like to show what we had the previous year compared to what we are requesting for the next year. So currently, we are in fiscal year 24. We are getting ready to make our request at town meeting for fiscal year 25. Um, as you can see, we are requesting a total of twenty-five million, four hundred thirty-four thousand, three hundred and fifty-three dollars, which is an increase of, um, four point four four percent. So, um, it's not a massive amount. It's mostly, as Superintendent DeBoer just said, a lot of it is tied to salaries, which are contractual obligations. Um, and we did, you know, what you're seeing, the school choice offset and capital improvement program, those items, you know, well, they've been taken out of the initial recommended budget. And so what we hope to have approved by the town manager and the select board will be that twenty-five million, four thirty-four, three fifty-three. Um, and we're in the process of that now, so we'll hopefully see some more information on that soon. But that is what we're looking at in this slide. Don, you want to add anything to this or move on?
Go ahead, move on.
Okay. Um, in our budget narrative, and when we present this to the town, we like to show our plan for success, which is our five-year, um, our five-year plan for how we improve the school district and things that we've identified as needing to work on and work toward. Um, it includes our mission statement for the district, our vision for the district, core values, and then our four pillars of success. Uh, Portrait of a Graduate, which to the right here, you can see the five pieces of the Portrait of a Graduate. Um, you can use your QR, you can scan the QR code to learn more about them, um, about each one of them, but those are the five things that we feel every student in Mashpee Public Schools, when they graduate, should be fully competent in. Um, and then diversity, equity, and inclusion is another pillar, teaching and learning, and then Mashpee a Connected Community. So as the budget's being developed, the items that we're looking at on the budget, the initiatives we're taking within the schools, what the district needs are, we try to make sure that they are all aligned to this plan for success, so that we are moving this plan for success forward. Um, and ensuring that our students are graduating with these five competencies. Uh, so that is why we include this in the narrative, the budget narrative, because we do want people in the town, not just the parents of the students, but, you know, taxpayers in town who are also funding this budget, to understand what their money is going toward, and this is a big piece of that. Uh, Don, if you want to add anything?
No, you did a good job on that one.
May I add that, uh, just for everyone who is listening, under each strategic objective, there is a series of initiatives, uh, not presented on this slide, but definitely in the full narrative that's posted to the website. And each year, this is year three, this is going into year four, uh, we've chosen certain initiatives to focus on, and then hopefully by the time we're in the last year, we will have spent time, um, accomplishing all of the initiatives or the action steps to, uh, reach the strategic objectives.
Exactly. So if you want to read more of that, you can always go to our website and find that. We also include that. Um, you can probably find it in a couple of our packets from meetings as well.
Yes.
Um, as we talked, we kind of talked about the budget timeline a little bit already, but here it is presented, and it can kind of, it shows you a little bit more where we're at, at the moment. Um, so as we said, early spring, we kind of start, um, the district leadership begins meeting, we establish our goals and priorities of the school committee, goes to the finance working group to review in the summer and the fall where the draft is made. Um, October, as I mentioned, that October deadline, that's when the budget is entered into munis, which is the town's counting system. Um, October through December, we review as a school committee, we review the budget, we kind of fine-tooth comb it, make sure that the items we feel need to be in there are in there, the amounts that we, you know, that look like they should be in there are in there, questions get answered. Um, Ashley is great at answering our questions, and for those of you who don't know, sometimes we as school committee members will ask questions, mostly Don, who is our financial hawk here, but um, I will say a lot of his questions are the ones that I end up wanting to ask as well. So he covers a lot of the things I have questions on. I also learned from his questions too. Um, but those questions sometimes get emailed to Ashley. You can access those questions through our website at any time. They are made public. So if you ever had a question of like, why didn't they ask about this? Chances are pretty good it has been asked. It's just was asked outside of the meeting, but it is made public through those, um, emails and linked on our website. Um, so basically, right now, we've presented to the town manager, the school committee has voted on this. On the seventeenth, we voted to approve this budget. Um, and it, the next day was presented to the town manager. And now we kind of are waiting for the budget to be presented to the finance committee sometime in March. And then once the finance committee makes its recommendation, it will go before our annual town meeting on May 6th, which is why it is important that people go to town meeting if they can and, and vote to approve it. Go ahead, Don.
So, just to elaborate a little bit on this process, um, so we have sent the, our proposed budget, as far as for appropriations requests to the town manager. Um, the town manager obviously is reviewing it, and if has questions, will get back, uh, to us. Um, sometimes in the past, um, the town managers come back and said, um, he can't balance the town budget and has requested us to, um, try to make cuts in our budget. And, uh, where impossible, we have tried to accommodate him. In the ominous budget that will be presented at town meeting, there will be the schools' request, requested appropriation budget, there will be the town managers', um, requested appropriation by department. So therefore, uh, for the school district. It's important for people to understand that when the, when you're voting at town meeting, you're voting on the town manager's request. You're not voting, um, on the school committee's request. So if there is a difference, and there has been in the past, um, it's actually the town manager's, uh, line item, um, that is being, uh, voted on. And, and it's usually done in totality. So you're voting on the entire ominous budget. Um, there is possibility that, um, the town's folks might not approve the, uh, budget, and if that was the case, um, then what would happen is whatever the difference would have to be rectified, um, on town meeting floor. Um, I've been attending meetings for twenty years. That's never happened. Um, but that's always, um, a possibility. Uh, usually, uh, the school and the town manager are able to come to, uh, some sort of agreement in regard to any differences in the, um, ominous budget. Um, the select board and the, uh, FinCom, um, provide recommendations in regard to whether they recommend voters approve or not approve, um, the ominous budget, and also, um, the capital improvement plan. So, those are recommendations. Those are not, um, they do not have the ability to, um, change the budget, but they can provide, um, at least their recommendations, uh, to the voters. And that will be published in the annual report.
And just to trail on to that, that's for those who are maybe new to town meeting format, that's when they go through that omnibus. I never say that word right. Um, when they go through that budget, the town manager's recommended budget, that's when you'll hear people say, "Hold." You know, like, they, they may ask for a hold on an item, and that would be when you could question why there's a difference between the school committee's requested and what the town manager's proposed is. So if, again, for those who might be new, I know, again, some of our stakeholders are new to town, some of our families are new to town, might not have experienced town meeting before. But as Don explained in, in great detail, I think that process, you know, if you do come to town meeting and you hear someone as they're going through that budget say, "Hold", that's a way to ask questions at that point. So.
And just to add that, um, it is my understanding that this week, the town manager is meeting with his team of, um, planners at town hall and reviewing all of the submitted operating budgets, and that if there is going to be a requested, uh, change to our budget, we should be hearing about that very soon.
Excellent. Um, so as we prepare the budget, um, you know, Don mentioned, it starts from the bottom up. Um, there are guidelines to it that we try to adhere to. You know, we want to make sure we're, um, it, we're covering all of our legal and contractual mandates. We want to make sure that anybody who, you know, has some kind of legal or contractual obligation is, is fulfilled. Um, we want to include sufficient operating and capital funds to address, as we said, the plan for success and implementation. Uh, we would like to keep current level of education services, educational services for Mashpee students. Uh, we need to keep up with our technology services and demands, uh, for all of our students. And in Mashpee, we're very fortunate to be able to provide our students with a one-to-one, um, at least that starts, what, in sixth grade? It's a one-to-one, or does it go younger than that now?
No, it's pretty well all the way down.
Okay, so in Mashpee, we're very fortunate to have that one-to-one technology to student, uh, ratio, which is, is really amazing. Um, we also want to make sure our budget covers any updates to curriculum and also addresses the increasing social emotional needs of our students, um, through staffing and programming. Uh, Don, you want to talk about those last two?
Um, I'm gonna cover those in a
Okay, so the other guidelines that we cover are school choice program funds. We want to maintain a $250,000 floor is kind of our emergency fund. Um, and we'll get into school choice funds, I think, in a few minutes, a little deeper. Um, and we also want to, we also assume that ongoing practices and protocols to maintain the facilities are funded through the DPW's operating budget for 2025, fiscal year 2025. Um, again, for those who might be new to the district or to the town, uh, Mashpee, our buildings are not operated by the schools, or not maintained, rather, by the schools. Um, they are maintained by the DPW. So any facility improvements, repairs, upgrades, anything building-wise, um, in terms of repairs and maintenance is handled by the DPW and not by the school department. We, we work in conjunction with them, and on some things we may provide some funding, and they may provide funding, but there are certain things that when we're building our budget, um, we are assuming that certain things that they have been paying for in the past will continue to be paid for, such as the MERV-13 filters, hand sanitizer, sanitizing wipes, disinfectants, uh, those types of items. So.
And also to have, have everyone realize that the custodians are not part of our personnel budget, nor are the groundskeepers. They all fall under the DPW. In the year-end reporting, there's an allocation related to our buildings, but we don't have control over, um, those components.
The other piece that, um, people should be aware of that's not included in the town or in the, uh, school budget is for, um, our technical school in Harwich. Um, that is a separate line item that, uh, for both, uh, operating expenses, uh, for each of the, um, students, uh, Mashpee gets a allocation, um, set by the technical school. Um, Mashpee also similarly, um, is paying for capital improvements. So the recent, uh, new building that was built for, um, the technical school, um, Mashpee is, will be paying for, for, I think, the next ten or fifteen years, or maybe longer. So, um, those are two, um, significant expenses that are not included, uh, in the school budget.
But like you were talking about before, at town meeting in the omnibus budget, there is a line item where you will see the Cape Cod Tech operating budget, Mashpee share of it, and when, I mean, they have the same, uh, well, not the same, they have a similar process, so that superintendent goes to each of the towns to present, uh, his, his budget to the select board. And then again, FinCom and Select Board make their recommendation to approve it or not. So you'll see it in total in terms of Mashpee.
It's usually a separate warrant article for the Cape Cod Tech, usually. I don't think they include that. No, it's in the omnibus?
It's in the ominous budget.
Okay, I'm confusing it with where I work. Sorry, because they do a separate warrant article for that one.
Yeah, and, um, contractionally, um, the representatives on the school board for the technical school are appointed, um, by the town. They're not part of the school committee. So, um, it, it truly operates as this kind of a, uh, separate school, um, from the public school.
Right, yep. So the big question, where does all the money come from? Um, and that's what this slide kind of shows, and in the, uh, budget narrative, we try to really clearly spell out where we get our funding from. Um, we do get about eight, in FY25, we're anticipated to get about eight hundred thousand in grants. Um, we talked about school choice program funds. So, um, those are monies that come from students who come into Mashpee for an education from a neighboring town. Um, there is money that, that moves between districts to cover the costs of students who are utilizing school choice to attend a school in a different town. Um, and that is always spent in arrears, a year in arrears. So, um, the FY25, that, that's coming from the money from this year, um, that we've earned from students, school choicing into Mashpee Public Schools. Um, the town of Mashpee, we do ask for the remaining amount, which is usually a large lump sum. And then the state has what is known as Chapter 70 State Aid, which is a calculation, it's an equation that the, the state uses, um, to determine how much funding each town and city in the state receives. So, go ahead, Don.
Um, Ashley, I don't know offhand the exact amount, and you probably know it off the top of your head, but, um, for each student who comes to Mashpee for, under the school choice program, um, the state calculates what the reimbursement is, and I believe it's around five thousand dollars. Is that still correct?
It's five thousand dollars per student if they're here for the entire year. If they're here for a shorter period of time, it is prorated.
All right. So, we're giving reimbursed five thousand dollars, um. The superintendent and the administration, uh, along with working with the faculty, determine how many seats that we can accommodate at various grades in regard to having students, um, from outside who do not live in Mashpee, uh, come to, um, Mashpee. Um, and that's really, if we have a class of, let's say, twelve people, um, and the normal size for that particular class is sixteen, then, um, the belief is generally that that class, uh, room could support for, uh, students who are coming under the school choice program. And the teach, and that's done at a grade level by grade level, um, basis buildup on an annual, um, e- or each year, and that determines how many, uh, school choice seats are going to be available. Uh, that information is presented to the school committee, and then the school committee ultimately, uh, votes on that. Um, and then there's a lottery that's done, um, or is publicized as seats are available, um, and if necessary, lottery is done in order to fill those. So just to give a little bit of perspective, and this is, um, old information, but, um, Desi calculates what a per student expenditure is. Um, and so for 2022, this is the latest information that Desi has published. Um, they're showing that for industry, um, expenditures, it's, we're spending twenty-one thousand, six hundred and seventy-six dollars. So just contemplate the difference between we're getting reimbursed five thousand and we're spending, uh, twenty, on average, uh, twenty-one, six seventy-six. Now that calculation includes, you know, building costs, et cetera. Um, so that's a fully loaded one, but just to give you an idea of what you're spending as a taxpayer, uh, per pupil.
So just to, to add a little clarification, we do look across each grade level when we're, when we're considering where to add school choice or offer school choice seats. We look at our resources because school choice is not meant to increase the budget in any way. We're not going to add a teacher in order to accommodate twenty more school choice students. So we do look across each grade level, and we also look at sort of our past experience with the number of students who move in and out during the summer, where like, say, eighth grade to ninth grade, we tend to lose some students because they have other choices. So we have places to look at to try to be, um, consistent. But when we open up school choice seats, we are taking But when we open up school choice seats, we are taking sort of the resources we currently have in place. Um and finding out where there are spaces to add children in without increasing the budget in any way.
And just to point out, you know, the Chapter Seventy um aid has always been an issue with the um state. As far as um they provide a lot of unfunded mandates that don't come with funding. Um that Chapter Seventy aid uh for FY twenty-three was four, four million seven hundred and seventy-two thousand. So, you know, it's gone up about eighty thousand dollars from FY um twenty-three to twenty-four. And we're projecting not much of a change, uh it looks like no change um for next year. So, you know, that's not a big source, it's really um the town that ends up providing us. With the biggest source of our funding, and if you look in total, um the school budget represents. Well, used to represent um roughly about forty-five percent of the town budget. Uh with the sewer projects and all of that stuff coming in. I'm not sure what that percentage is going to be, my guess is it'll probably drop a little bit, but um. You know, by far, we are um one of the biggest expenditures and obviously one of the biggest employers also.
And sure everyone realizes the Chapter Seventy aid goes directly to the town of Mashpee.
Yeah. So um the budget gets split in a sense into two categories, we've got the personnel budget, we've got the operating budget. So personnel budget really reflects the salaries of our contracted um faculty and staff. Um as you can see, a lot of these are known because of the contracts, what the increases will be. We just finished up our um last round of negotiations. So we should be good for another three years with our our wonderful faculty and staff. And um that is a lot of what we're looking at here, there was an increase of about nine hundred thousand dollars. And again, this is, this is all, these are known increases, so this is. Uh as Superintendent DeBor said, about eighty-one percent of the budget is tied up to these numbers. Um we did request this year a new position, a part-time pilot position. Um for a data analyst to focus on student data, whether it's test scores. Whether it's participation in sports or clubs or after集体 activities, classes, that, you know. Just across the board, analyze the data coming out of our classrooms. Uh but using specifically the lens of diversity, equity, inclusion and belonging to make sure that we are. Uh lifting up all our students in Mashpee, and making sure that the choices we are making and funding. Are actually increasing our students' achievements and uh ensuring that they are leaving Mashpee. Best prepared for the world as they can. We also do have some curriculum and technology increases, and you know, there are some potential unanticipated personnel changes. Like Superintendent DeBor mentioned, we never know exactly who's going to retire or who's going to come in for the year. So sometimes those can be unknown changes. Um but for this budget, there are no increase to full-time employees, um those FTEs. But we, like I said, we are requesting that part-time pilot uh position. So that is a slight increase from last year to this year, Don, do you want to add anything to this, or?
Um just to point out that um one, um this is. FY twenty-five is the second year of our three-year contract um with um our teachers union, which is. Um our our largest, um FY twenty-four is the first year. Um but the other point I just wanted to make was that. While our overall headcount hasn't increased, the allocation of the headcount will be changing. And uh I'm gonna pass that to Patty, um if she wants to make just a little bit of a comment about that. And what you're looking at.
And and I apologize, I I see an error, I was trying to fix it, can you repeat your question?
So while our headcount is not changing, um the allocation of our headcount. To the various schools is changing based upon the needs, and so. You just want to talk a little bit about that process and and what, and why you have, why we're making those changes.
Yes, so our our bottom-line goal is to um, as a way to address the social emotional needs of our students. Post-pandemic is to reduce our class sizes. We feel that that is one strategy that will lead to improved academic outcomes and wellness for students. So we have a goal of our K through eight classrooms being um. At an enrollment of sixteen students per class, and then also, and so that goes all the way up through eighth grade. Also at the uh college prep level courses at Mashpee Middle High School, we also have a goal to keep those class sizes to sixteen. So that we're ever better able to support the learners, we have looked across um our resources in total. And in looking at current sort of um teacher loads at Mashpee Middle High School. We believe that we can reallocate teachers down into the fifth and sixth grade level, which will then cause a little bit more shifting lower. Uh so just as Pat, last week, I sent out the email informing staff of what the plan was and seeking volunteers. So far, I already have one um from the middle high school, which currently is over-resourced. To shift a few down to the elementary so that we can reach our goal. And um we do feel strongly that we we can accomplish this goal with our current staff, which is. Um we're very fortunate to have a pretty expert uh group of individuals who work for us.
All right. You want to go to the operational expenses slide?
Sure, so this is just a quick overview that shows you had the breakdown of the personnel, it does remain pretty static from year to year. Uh you'll see a little slight difference in cautionate special ed to cautionate special ed from uh FY twenty-four to FY twenty-five. Generally, um there's pretty much consistency, the other piece up here. Is the two schools, sorry, regular ed and special ed, but I will go to the next slide. That's the, this is the operation, non-personnel.
Right, so.
Go ahead, Don, you take.
So really, thi- this is, if you look at um what's enti- entailed here. The two biggest items that stick out to you are going to be out-of-district tuitions and transportation. Um I will handle the transportation and I will defer to uh the superintendent on the out-of-district. But so transportation, Mashpee is one of the few, if uh last. Um schools here on Cape Cod and probably around the state that provides free transportation. Or i.e. free buses um to all of our students. So everyone who lives in Mashpee can ride the bus, there's no bus fees, to move to Barnstable, you're gonna pay a bus fee. That is something that we have been doing um for a long time. We feel it's important that that this is not a burden um on students. And families to be able to get to school. The other items that are listed here excluding um the out-of-district. You know, a lot of supplies um are included in here, technology is included in here. Um those are things that help support our teachers in the classrooms, support our faculty. Uh and administration to be able to do their jobs, this is something that doesn't increase a whole lot. Year over year, matter of fact, this is increasing less than uh uh the total of the budget uh is, so. With that, I want to, I just talked briefly about the out-of-district tuition, what that's made up of, um to make sure that. You, it's said concisely and and correctly.
Um well, I might actually have uh Director Finance Lopes involved as well. What I did want to say to everyone is that the narrative that is posted on our website describes. So when you look at the percentage change, we look at anything that seems sort of abnormally high, anywhere from the nine point six one percent. That you see at the district administration, the thirty-five point six at Coombs, there is an explanation for all of those within that narrative. Just um to clarify, if you're wondering, you know, that seems high, even though as Don pointed out, overall, the increase is three point seven five percent. Director Finance Lopes, do you want to add the out-of-district piece for, I know that we've had students who have graduated out of the program?
Yes, so out-of-district tuitions um are related to our our student-specific. So those costs relate to the services that we provide to students who are outside of Mashpee Public Schools, receiving special education services. Um those will change year over year depending on what services are needed and what students are in district and out of district, it's a very fluid number. Um a lot of towns, uh we'll talk about this number can break a budget year over year. So um our administrative team works very closely to project what the out-of-district tuitions will be from year to year. Um last year, right as we submitted our budget, the state gave us a fourteen percent increase for private placements. So that uh really impacted school districts in their projections, uh this year you can see that we have a reduction. Because we had a change in services of those students who are out of district.
And most, and just so everyone knows that a student who's out of district or needs support, we cover that until they age out at age twenty-two. It's not eighteen when they graduate high school.
All right, so just in the essence of time, there's a number of other slides that are in the presentation that's posted on the website. Um if anyone has questions regarding uh the information that's contained in here. Um please don't hesitate to reach out to the school committee or reach out to um the superintendent or the the finance director. Um they would be more than happy uh to answer your questions.
Yeah, and we are definitely available and happy to answer any questions you might have, but. Um like Don said, I'd like to echo if you have questions or if you just have some time and really want to look at these numbers. It's all posted online, um for full transparency, we we try to make it um easily understood by our families. And 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 taxpayers in town, so please feel free to look through those. And and, you know, just pay attention to the numbers and be at town meeting to devote to help approve this. Did you want to talk CIP, you paused here for a minute?
Well, we did, so the CIP committee did meet and approve both the fifty thousand and twenty-five thousand that you see there. That were our CIP requests, now that's within the committee, the committee still has to come down to sort of their total, we're sort of almost there. And then what's the total that the town manager is comfortable with and moving forward with? But um specifically within the committee, those items for the schools have been approved down below. As we said, the DPW is responsible for maintaining our buildings, so a lot of times there are CPI, CIP requests that come through. The Director of the DPW, Catherine Laurent, so flooring replacements, fire alarm upgrades, particularly at the Mashpee Middle High School. Uh the Coombs School's safety and security window film, because they have a lot of glass. And then we're asking, um she put in seventy-five thousand for an engineering design um for the access road that we are seeking. Includes a pedestrian walkway, but it would be for uh bus transportation and emergency vehicles. To try to alleviate some of the um stress on Old Barnstable Road at arrival and dismissal.
All right.
Okay.
Thank you, and if you're still with us, we're gonna take our last uh twelve minutes here to talk about our annual. Um family parent guardian survey and then our more recent student survey. So the school committee, we we don't want to operate in a vacuum, you know, we were elected to represent. The families and taxpayers of Mashpee, um but we do try to keep a student. Forward and student-centered view as we're we're doing our work. In order to do that, we found that it's very important and helpful to actually hear from families. And what, three years ago, we implemented the student version of the survey or four years ago?
This will be the third year for students.
So three years ago, in an effort to increase student voice, we distributed a very similar, almost identical survey. To students in grades five through twelve, um but we're gonna talk, I think, first, we're looking right now at the parent guardian. Survey for students in grades five through twelve. Oh, and students in grades five, oh, sorry, uh so every year we send this out, uh we collect the data. And this is what we try to use to inform our goals and decisions um as we as a committee work. And try to ensure that our schools are the best they can be. Don, you want to add anything to that before we kind of go into the questions and how that all comes about?
No, I mean, because we've been doing this, um particularly with the parent uh survey for a number of years. It gives us a ability now to take and look at trends over time, to see whether or not there's improvements. Um based upon any changes that we've made in various uh areas, and typically, we, the questions that we're asking. Um are very similar uh or verbatim year over year, so it gives us confidence that uh the feedback that we're getting. Um should be reflective of what we're doing.
Yes, and you know, we do look at those year-over-year statistics, and that's why, you know, we, it it may seem like a lot of questions. But the information that we get from these surveys is quite invaluable um for us as a committee, so. Um you know, if you feel like it's the same old, same old, it really isn't, and we really do appreciate you taking the time to answer it. For each one of your students, uh we should mention that this goes out to every family, and we ask that you fill one out for every student. In every school or grade that you have a student in, so that we can get kind of a holistic picture of your thoughts. On the schools and on your students' experience in the schools. Um this year, we are gonna do something a little different to try to increase um participation. And Superintendent DeBor's uh edit there just reminded me of that. We are going to be incentivizing this a little bit for families um with a drawing for um some Amazon gift cards. If you complete the survey by a certain date, which will be included in the sending of this. And this is kind of the draft that we're working on right right now. So as you can see, some questions might have changed from the year before. Um some questions are added, like specifically I'm looking at question eight, where you can see the wording that we had from the previous year. Our outreach working group meets and they review this with the superintendent, they go question by question to see if the question. You know, should stay, if it's a legacy question, are we still looking for that information, are there things that we should add? Um you know, during the COVID year, we had a section of questions that were very specific to COVID, to um policies surrounding COVID. Um to try and gauge what families were thinking during that time. Um clearly, those questions are not on these surveys anymore because we've kind of passed that a little bit, um but. We do have other questions that we've added since then and have come and gone, so.
So the blue with a, if it's shaded blue, those tend to be our legacy prompts, which means they've been on for. If not all the years, most of the years, um so those we keep. I was just gonna say, there was some suggestion to move a few questions around, just so that we, if they were specific to staff, they were all sort of connected in one. Zone.
I I do want to speak also to the fact, we do ask for your email in this, not so much that we can. Identify you off the bat, but more, if there's a really glaring issue that the district can address. Um and are able to, we would like to be able to reach back out to you. So while the survey is going to ask for, it still does, correct Superintendent DeBor asked for that, you know, address.
It asked, it actually asked for the um, the names, it asked for like the student names, uh but I will. Uh, but I will reemphasize what um Kathy just said is that the principals, the only person that really sees this information is me. The principals do not even see um the the actual details that come in because we we encourage everyone to include any narrative that they would like. And I have found that to be extremely beneficial and helps with problem solving. That would be harder if it was anonymous, but the schools do not see specific parent or guardian responses um by name. They just see it in the aggregate.
Exactly. So while it appears like that information will be distributed with your responses, you it really is not, even at the school committee level, when we review these answers, we are not seeing your name, your child's name, your email, any of that. It's really just if there is a really big um concern or issue expressed in a response, it gives the district the ability to dig a little deeper and see if there's a more immediate fix for your student um than waiting for a district-wide change. You know, it's it's more so that we can tailor that to your child and make sure we're addressing any glaring issues right off the bat. That being said, the the surveys, what are we at this year? We're at third, we jumped to.
Questions?
Yeah. So we're at forty-four questions.
No.
Thirty-six, sorry.
Thirty-six, thirty-six for the uh parent guardians, Quashnet and MMHS, thirty-three for Coombs parents. And then the last two columns are students, uh, the MMHS and then the Quash.
So um, we do also put this through a parental, right? We still reach out to the parents.
We're probably going to do a Zoom um where we're going to go with all these questions as well. And sometimes it's a word change. It makes a lot of sense from a perspective of a parent. So it's good.
Yes.
And just so. Just elaborate on one thing in regard to confidentiality. So um what is shared with the school committee is only um aggregate information. It's is not individual information. So um, just to emphasize that. We, you know, the only one who's seeing that is uh the superintendent.
Right.
Yes. Um. So again, these these surveys are very important. They're usually sent out. We're sending this out right around school, February school break, correct Superintendent DeBor?
We are still aiming for probably around the Wednesday we get back from the February vacation. And we're going to probably extend it a little bit into March. We are trying to have it um be available at some of the school events because there is a strong desire to have a table and encouragement to have people complete the survey there. Um, the other piece too is we're trying to incentivize with the Amazon gift card, which thank you to the boosters as they have provided that to us. We will also do some sort of uh, the students at the middle high school kind of like the idea of some type of a gift card as well. The elementary schools are going to do some sort of like pizza party challenge for, you know, a hundred percent participation with, you know, taking your time and reading the questions carefully.
Which is great because, you know, while parents see things one way, you know, as a parent, I know my perception might be different than my child who is in the building day in and day out. So um, as a school committee member, it's very interesting to see the differences between the parents' answers and the student answers, or in some cases, the similarities between the parents' answers or guardians' answers and the the students' answers. So this, again, I can't stress enough, I know it seems kind of like, oh, I gotta take a survey, but we do use this data very much to understand, you know, what people perceive the need in our schools to be. Um, last year, we had some some scores on some of these questions regarding safety and how our children feel in school, if they feel safe in school. Um, it was a little vague last year. I think this year we've kind of made that a little bit more clear, correct? I'm trying to see.
Yeah, it's twenty, it's quite, right at the top of the screen, twenty-six.
Yeah. So this year, we're going to kind of separate it out between physical safety and emotional safety. Um, but the overall notion last year was not exactly what we had hoped it to be. So when we were making our goals as a school committee in August, we really wanted to focus on the safety of our students and making sure that students who attend Mashpee feel safe. So um, we do use these answers and we do look at these answers and we try to inform our decisions uh based on some of these perceived needs and perceived experience, you know, and these experiences. Um, I shouldn't say perceived experience, they're experiences that people are having that are making them answer this way. So, you know, please take a few minutes to answer these questions for each one of your students. And if you have a student, remind them, say, hey, did you take that survey yet? Um, because it it's important information. And we really do value it.
In terms of the students this year too, last year, we kind of had, we picked a block of time at the middle high school and said, okay, everybody's going to take it. Well, there was some crashing and burning involved with that. So we are going to be very specific as sort of seventh grade is taking it on this day during this block of time. And so spreading that out um for their initial and obviously um kids can finish it. Also, no one, no student is required or forced to take it. It is still voluntary, but we are going to work with our teachers and um to make sure that we're all messaging the importance of student voice and answering the questions. So hopefully that will help.
Yes. Um, of course, it's it's not mandatory, but it is appreciated. So.
Very much.
That is, yes, very, very much. Don, do you have anything else you want to add to the survey?
No, I I think um, you know, the school committee, the superintendent have put a um, a lot of work into uh trying to craft an informative survey. Um, you know, they have done uh some focus groups to try to refine it um and make sure that we're covering uh the right things here. So um, you know, and I hope that uh we're able to get a high percentage of both parents and uh students participating in it. So I look forward to seeing what the the results are.
Agreed. It is always very interesting that night when we get to kind of review those results. So um, that being said, thank you again for tuning in tonight. Uh, hopefully you've got a little bit more understanding of our budget and how we craft and develop and present and vote on our budget. Um, hopefully, those of you who watch this will be at town meeting to help support the schools and the approval of our budget. Um, and then also, hopefully you understand why we do our students or our our family survey as well as our student survey. And as Dawn mentioned earlier, if you ever have any questions, all of us school committee members, we do have personal emails, but we also have a group email, schoolcommittee@mpspk12.org. So please, at any time, if you have questions about anything school committee-related or school-related, we can either answer or direct you to the person who can, depending on what the question is. But we definitely welcome hearing from families and constituents uh because we we recognize um the importance of our schools and how it factors into our town budget as a whole. So thank you for spending some time with us tonight and hopefully you found that informative.
Thank you.
Thank you, everybody. I'm going to.
Thanks.
Oh.
As I, uh, okay, I'm going to stop recording now.